All right, before we get started, I just want to ask if any of you lost a roll of $100 bills in the envelope? Because I found the envelope. And the school board already spent it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen, boys and girls. I'm Alice, the moderator of the debate tonight. And I'm still debating on to be or not to be the moderator for tonight. When I was leaving the house tonight, my teenager son gave me a hug and said, "Mom, try not to be too charming, too witty, and too intellectual. Just be yourself." So here I am, not too witty, not too intellectual, and not too charming. Just my normal self. Welcome to tonight's CoverNova-sponsored debate. This debate is not an endorsement of either candidate. CoverNova stands for Chinese-American Parents Association of Northern Virginia. We are a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit organization registered in 2001. And over the past three and a half years, CoverNova had delivered over 300 community events covering a variety of topics with a key focus on education and community building. This afternoon, my 10-year-old daughter told me after my teenager's advice, "Mom, Mark Twain said there are only two kinds of speakers: the nervous one and the liar. You should be the liar so the candidates can be the nervous ones." So with that, I'd like to have our candidates and our candidate representative have a brief and a serious introduction of themselves. And for each question, the candidate will have two minutes. Our timer helper over here, we have kids helping as well, they will hold up the time's up right card. And then the candidate will have 30 seconds to wrap up. Right, that 30 seconds. At 2 and 1/2 minutes, we will have the heart stop. And don't mess with me because I know Kung-Fu, Taekwondo, Karate, Jiu-Jitsu, and 20 other dangerous words. So let's begin. So Robin, can you please tell us your background, your self-introduction, and most importantly, your compelling reason to run for the school board?
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the Chinese-American Parents Association for hosting this debate tonight. Yes, I'd love to give you some background myself. I'm actually native of Fairfax County. I grew up in Vienna. I went to Madison High School. So I spent all my schooling years here. I moved here when I was three. After that, I went to the College of Women and Marriage to get my undergraduate degree. While there, I majored in psychology and I also minored in biblical studies. I was interested in working with youth and I wasn't sure in what capacity. I was thinking at that time I might do youth ministry, but also I was thinking about school counseling. While a student at the college, I was coaching at a local high school and found that that connection with young people was really my calling, to be in a public school setting, working with kids, helping them reach their potential, meeting with success. And I think one of the great things about schools is that you're meeting with great success in the classroom, but also to see kids succeed on the athletic field or in a performance or some other club or activity. So after I finished Women and Marriage and got my master's at UVA in Council Education, so I'm proud to have done K-18 here in our public school system in the state of Virginia. After that, I got my first job in Winchester. I was actually a drug and alcohol counselor at a high school for a year. After that, it was on a grant from Doug Waller's office, so that was only a one-year position. I then worked for two years in Manassas Park City Schools as a middle school counselor, so I had some experience at that level. And then my fourth year out, I finally got hired by Fairfax at my rival high school, Marshall High School. So those of you that know the rivals between our high schools, it was a little interesting for me to embark on my journey here in Fairfax at Marshall. I was there when they transitioned from the AP program to the IB program, so I'm very familiar with the standards and the high academic course options that we have in both curricula. After being at Marshall for seven years, I went to Thomas Jefferson High School for four years. I was there from '02 to '06. It was fun. It was interesting. Special place. Lots of interesting things. And I couldn't fathom what some of the kids were studying at the time that came to fruition later. I'm also, after TJ, I went to McLean for a year. I was only there a year because I then got hired as a director of student services at Chantilly High School where I spent the last 15 years of my career. So I'm a lifer in education. And 27 of those years have been right here in Fairfax County, always in public schools. The other thing I want to share is I'm a small business owner. After being a TJ, I started doing some work in college admissions counseling. And probably about seven or eight years ago, I started my LLC, which is called Stand Out College Apps. And that's exactly what I do. Our kids work extremely hard in the classroom, outside the classroom, extracurricularly, internships, theater, orchestra. They have a lot going on in their lives. When it comes to completing an application, especially for selective admissions, they're not sure how to do that. So I help students be very purposeful and deliberate in that application to showcase every part of themselves so that a college can see what it is that they're looking for in that kid and why that kid's a match to their institution. Also, in terms of college admissions, I've done a lot of work in that field. The National Association for College Admissions Counseling, which is a 27,000-plus member association, I was on the board of that association. I just rolled off in September. Those three years were some of the best professional development of my life, working with folks on the college side in enrollment and admissions and financial aid. And then also working with students, with counselors around the country in private or independent schools, helping their students access college. I'm running for the board because I retired a year ago thinking I'd focus more on my small business. And while I love that, I miss kids. I miss using my gifts and my skills for the public good. I feel like I really want this school board to get focused back on teaching and learning and high expectations for all of our students. I find sometimes there's tied up in conversations that really don't affect our student achievement. We need to work on that. We obviously still have some COVID loss that we have to address. I also am a big proponent of pre-K for those who can't afford it. But I'll get more into my issues later. But again, my number-one why for running is I just want to refocus on teaching and learning. And in short, I want to be the practitioner, the educator at the table with politicians to help them understand our schools. So thank you for being here. I look forward to sharing more of my thoughts and ideas with you.
Our candidate, the other candidate, is on the call with a judge and on the way here. So he has a representative, Mr. Dick Porter.
Thank you very much. Good evening. As the moderators indicated, I am not Paul Bartowski. He is on a call with a judge. I'm a former lawyer. When a judge says he wants to schedule a call, you don't have any alternative, but he's on his way and should be here shortly. He asked me to fill in just to provide you some basic information on who he is and why he's running for the school board. When he arrives, you'll immediately notice that he bears no recollection of myself. He's much better-looking. He's taller. He's younger. And he certainly has a lot more hair. So by way of professional background, Paul is a lawyer. He has a BS in chemical engineering from Lafayette College. He graduated with a law degree with honors from George Washington University. He and his wife are parents of three children, all of whom are in the FCPS system, either in the past or currently. As I indicated, he's a lawyer with his own firm in McLean. He specializes in intellectual property law and international law. Most importantly, I think, for purposes of this election, and I can personally attest to that, he is a man of great focus. He has a lot of common sense. And he has incredibly good judgment. And I think that's important in any public position. Paul's concern with the direction in which FCPS has been heading began during the COVID shutdown. With three kids at home, he saw firsthand the ineffectiveness of distance learning. And he noted the significant adverse effects that school closings had on his own children and their peers, both in terms of their social development and in terms of their ability to learn. He also noticed a steady creep of political ideological agendas creeping into the curriculum and into classroom assignments. Having watched the school board in action, and Paul has been to many school board meetings, as have I, he's been particularly appalled by its almost singular focus on ideological issues, frequently parading under the rubric of equity. And he's also been concerned with the lack of focus on academics and seemingly the war on merit that has occurred recently in Fairfax County. Paul is running for the school board to bring common sense to all of the decision-making that the school board has. He wants to work particularly in three areas of great concern. First, to improve the curriculum and to reverse the terrible learning loss that so many students have suffered from. As you undoubtedly know, this has been a significant learning loss, both in math and reading. Between 2019 and 2021, reading scores dropped 10%. Math scores declined 30%. And there's been a corresponding decline in SAT scores. And I suspect that will be discussed further during this debate. He wants to turn the focus away from ideological indoctrination in the schools, which is all too prevalent. And he wants to focus on academic excellence for all students, no matter what their race, their background, or whatever it is. The school system is spending between $16,000 and $17,000 a year per pupil. It needs to meet the needs of all students. Finally, he wants to ensure that parents' rights in the education of their children are respected. He wants to make sure that parents' voices are heard. And he wants to make sure that the school system is always fully transparent with parents regarding any and all issues affecting the well-being of their children. And that includes some of the hotly debated and discussed trans issues that are currently going on. So that is essentially why Paul has indicated he is running. I have worked with him in a number of different areas. I've worked with him on his campaign. He's a better speaker than I am, so hopefully he'll be here shortly to answer not only the moderator's questions, but your questions as well.
A famous Chinese philosopher, Wang Yangming, once said, "What's in my heart is also in your heart. And what's in my conscience is also in your conscience. What's in my truth is also in your truth." My daughter said, "Mom, I get it. It's like a tree. We all are from the same seed and root. And we have branched out to different shades and different colors and different shapes of leaves." So it is my intention for the theme of our debate tonight to be rooted in holding that common ground of that heart, that conscience, and that truth while debating our differences. It's altogether fitting and proper for someone like me who came to America 26 years ago with two bags of American dreams to remind everyone what America stands for. And Luribus ulu, auto meaning "one." For the last few years, the beloved American dream is being turned upside down. And many immigrant parents have realized that. Many American-born parents have realized that. Education is at the root of a declining society. Confused, entitled, and mediocrity aiming children have never been the supreme goal of any great nation in any part of human history. So what are the solutions? Let's hear from our candidates tonight. The first question to Robin. On July 18 this year, Virginia Department of Education published model policies on ensuring privacy, dignity, and respect for all students and parents in Virginia public schools. On August 15, 2023, FCPS issued a statement saying, "FCPS will continue to address students by their chosen names and pronouns. Will continue to provide students with access to facilities, activities, and/or trips consistent with their gender identity. And will continue to respect the privacy of students' gender expansive or transgender status." These FCPS policies are not consistent with the Virginia model policy. Do you think FCPS should change its policies to be consistent with the model policy or should maintain its current position? Thank you.
So I will begin by saying I do support the superintendent. And that's pretty much based on my education and training as a counselor. One of the most important things that we take in oath around when we become counselors is something we call unconditional positive regard. And that basically means expressing empathy, support, acceptance to students regardless of what they say. So I'm going to start with that premise. I'm never to judge a child that walks in my office. So the other thing is we know that kids need to feel safe physically and safe emotionally in order to access learning. Having said all of that, as a counselor, it's been my experience that when I partner with parents, that's how we help students. That's how we help grow students as we help them meet with success. Throughout my tenure as a counselor, throughout my tenure as a director of student services, I never had a situation where a student shared with me that they were trans. It was always their parent who called me because they were concerned about the safety of their kid. So I'm going to start there and just say that I think it's unfortunate that the news media has made this sound like this is actually an epidemic of sorts when really we are talking about a small, small number of students. And like I said, in my experience, there hasn't been a situation where there was a student where the parents were not aware. So in terms of honoring pronouns or honoring a name a student would like to be called, again, working with parents is what educators do. So if a student were to ask us to use a different pronoun than their general birth, we're going to do that. But then we write a parent or call a parent and say, "Hey, I want to call you to talk about your son." And they're like, "Well, that's my daughter." Well, you're instantly in a conversation about that. So and again, I'm just speaking my truth here. It's not been a big issue. The other thing I want to say is that no child should ever be made to feel that there's something wrong with them because of who they are. You know, there was a time when we were pretty much just a white county. We welcome all people from all cultures, immigrants from all over the world, students from all walks of life. We have economically disadvantaged kids. It's not my place to judge. And the other reason is that the LGBTQ+ community is four times as likely to attempt suicide. And I want kids alive in my building. That's my number-one priority, is that they're alive, they feel safe emotionally and physically to learn. Thank you.
While waiting for Paul to be here, so I'm going to continue the question for Robin. For most Chinese-American families, Confucius' focus on hard work, Confucianism's focus on hard work, family, education, and meritocracy has been deeply ingrained in us. We work hard. We hold families together. We focus on education. We pay taxes. We ask for no reparations. We don't feel entitled. We don't complain. We don't lament. We believe that actions speak louder than words. We model that for our kids, and our kids model after us. While being given the same opportunities, we collectively work harder and thus create different results. You can easily find evidence no further than in the school orchestras and National Merit Scholarship lists, year after year. Last year, 17 FCPS schools did not inform the students about their National Merit scholarships. So do you think our kids have a place in schools? Thank you.
This is an interesting debate, but hi, it's me again. So I'm going to say this. As a director of student services, well, first of all, National Merit Commended Scholars, that's what we're talking about, that recognition, that envelope with those certificates gets mailed to the principal. It's incumbent upon the principal to then deliver that to the director of student services to then have their, like for me. So I would get that envelope. I would immediately divide up my cards by alphabet. And I would hand-deliver them to the counselors in my building. And I would say, "Make sure you put this in Paul Bartowski's hand by Friday and explain where he puts this on his Common Application in terms of academic honors." So I'm going to tell you, I stand before you. This never happened under my charge. I also will share with you that in Fairfax County, there are some principals who think that a director of student services does not have to have a counseling background. Unfortunately, when you bring people who have administrative backgrounds into a director of student services role, they're not familiar with these merit things. They're not familiar with Common Applications. They're not familiar with the process. I think in some of those situations, we do have some people who don't have a counseling background. I also think that, you know, while college board informs students of every single other award, every other award except for commended, there were definitely some people who didn't understand that they were the only communication to those kids about being a commended scholar. All of my colleagues throughout the county, I don't think it was 17. I think it was 17 in North Virginia, between Loudon and Prince Williams. I don't think it was 17 in Fairfax. But I do know within Dransville that Langley was one of our schools. And TJ, we have kids who go to TJ. So it's inexcusable. And we have a regulation now to address it. I don't believe that anything was done with malintent. Obviously, when our kids achieve, we need to celebrate that achievement. Every fall, I had an academic honors award ceremony at Chantilly High School. I recognized AP scholars with distinction. I recognized national merits. I recognized perfect scores on the ACT or perfect scores on the SAT. Our students work hard, and they need to be recognized. And I'm a strong believer in those recognitions. And I'm pleased that now, I just saw, because one of my private clients is commended, his mom emailed me the email that came to her about his being a commended scholar. And it was beautifully written. It is part of the regulation now. So at least, hopefully, this particular situation will never happen again. But when our students achieve, we need to celebrate that achievement. Absolutely.
Thank you, Robin. Is Paul home?
I assume he is. Would you like me to address any of those issues I could address?
Would you like?
I'll be happy. I know his position on the issues.
Okay.
Again, I apologize for having to stand in for Paul. He will be here. And I think he'll stay as long as he wants to answer any of your particular questions on any subject. With respect to the first question that was posed to Robin, having spoken to Paul directly yesterday and having spoken to him over a period of time, he disagrees entirely. He believes that the model policies with respect to trans students should be embraced by the Fairfax County Public Schools. Unfortunately, the system at the moment would allow schools essentially not to tell parents if someone registered as John Jones wishes to be known as Mary Jones. And he thinks that is completely unacceptable. Parents have a right to every issue and to know every issue that involves the well-being of their children. And schools should not be in the position of keeping secrets from children. Similarly, Paul has been involved in many sports activities and activities. By the high school level, if you have any kids in the sports, you know there's a considerable difference between men, boys, and girls, certainly by the time they reach high school. He believes that typically female sports in high school should remain female and should not be the province of a trans individual. He agrees 100% that all trans individuals or children suffering from gender dysphoria should be welcomed, should not be bullied, should be protected by the schools. But it's very important that parents be involved at every level of that. With respect to the second issue of National Merit Scholar recognitions, I'm not sure whether it was 17, Robin, throughout Northern Virginia or otherwise. But the problem is it happened. And that's incompetence. And the incompetence ultimately lays at the foot of the system itself, the school superintendent, and so forth. There has been an investigation. Fairfax County School Board spends a lot of money. They've spent money on two investigations. One on the failure of distance learning, about $1 million, and one more recently on the failure of people to have their National Merit commendations recognized. And in both instances, the school system has refused to release those reports to the public. I wonder if Robin would be here to comment on whether she would, I wonder if Robin would be able to comment on whether she would, if she'd like to, the school board vote to release those reports.
So, we're on question number three. According to the latest U.S. News and World Report ranking of high school in the U.S., and after three years at number one, Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology now ranks the fifth. What do you think was the cause of TJ's decline in ranking? Do you think the current TJ application process is appropriate? Why? So Paul, would you like to take this question first?
Sure. And thank you. And my apologies for being late. We had a judge that ordered a teleconference no longer than a half an hour. I went a little bit late. So thank you all for waiting. And thank you, Dick, personally. As to Thomas Jefferson, it's an important issue. It's a national--
Oh, sorry. Do you do extra minutes?
Yes.
Thirty seconds.
Understood. It's an important issue and it's a national issue. We had a number one ranking. It was the crown jewel of Fairfax County Public Schools. And we've effectively squandered it in terms of what I think is the reason for it. I think it was the predictable and logical result of purposeful choices made by the school board to prioritize effectively political issues and seeking equity, as they call it, across different demographic groups at the expense, not the known expense, of prioritizing merit and prioritizing academic achievement and admitting the best students to the best school in the country, which is only natural and only logical. And it took a very short period of time to have the predictable result of going from one to five. And if we don't reverse it, it's going to continue to drop. So that's my answer. And that's one of the reasons I'm running. I think it's across the school board that we've done things like that. And we've really taken our eye off the ball and failed to prioritize academic achievement and maximizing academic potential for every single student, including those at the top of the ballot, Thomas Jefferson. Thank you.
So I'm aware of that ranking. It's my understanding that that ranking and that drop took place before the changes that you're speaking of in TJ. It was before they ramped their admissions process in terms of the classes that they were doing that research for. So I'm also going to say that as someone who worked at TJ, it's a special place. But it's such a special place that it should, that every student should have an opportunity perhaps to be a part of that school. And that we, as a county, as a public school system, we should expect and want representation from all of our feeder middle schools at that school. When I was there, it was predominantly Longfellow, Rocky Run, Carson. It was not diverse. And that's great. But the other thing I'm going to say to you is we were focused-- when I first left TJ, became an administrator, it went out to administrators. They might want to help read applications for TJ. And I was like, I'm all in. I want to know how they pick these kids. Because I had a lot of kids at TJ that were humanities kids. They were struggling with the STEM side. So they were looking at TJ as a school for the gifted. And so when I read as a reader, and I had a co-reader reading the same applications, we got to the end, we had very different answers. Because I was not giving the kid who had done poetry slam and was a journalist and was doing all these humanities things the same score I was giving a kid who did math accounts or science alibi ad. And at the end of the day, when we were, she always wanted to go back to the test. Well, not everyone's a good test taker. And not everyone can afford to pay for a test. The amount of money we spend in this country on tutoring for tests, it's an unfair advantage for people. So I'm not, I have no problem. I believe in equity, but I believe in excellence. And I think, again, that we need representation from every school. Also, since I left, every class was 400 kids. It's 500 now. It's a bigger school. There's more seats. Yes, some of them will be taken up by kids who had not been at the table before. But I'm going to be sort of unapologetic in my belief around equity and excellence. So having said that, maybe we'll build a new school in the West, somewhere over there by Dulles. I keep hearing perhaps. And maybe we'll make it a different magnet school. We'll create even more seats. Because it is a special place. And all the kids who go there succeed. I'm also going to say this. All the academics in our base schools are fantastic. We have kids coming out of Chantilly, going to Harvard, going to MIT, going to Notre Dame. It's not just the TJ kids. And the one thing about TJ that's unique is MIT's only going to take seven or eight of them. They're not going to take 50 of them. So in some ways, you have a better chance at that selective school if you stay at your base school. Thank you.
Question number four. Several FCPS parents told us that their children are experiencing modern classroom, also known as reverse classroom. It means teachers no longer actively give lectures in class. Instead, teachers let students watch videos of lectures recorded during COVID school shutdown at home, while class hours are reserved for students to do homework. Do you think this is an effective teaching method? Why and why not? So Robin, it's time for you go first.
Thank you. I think that the actual educational term for that is flipped classroom. And I will tell you that, no, I'm not a big fan of flipped classrooms. I think we go to school to be taught. I think that our teachers-- while life has changed because of the internet, when we were young, many of us, a little old, were in school, the teacher knew it all. We had some encyclopedias, but we didn't have the internet. We couldn't go look up everything. So now, teachers are teachers, but they're also facilitators of learning. But I expect them to teach. And I also know that students need practice under the guidance of a teacher so that they can help correct them. I also know that with technology today, you know, the three big questions we ask in teaching is, what do we want the kids to know? How do we know if they know it? What do we do if they don't know it? What do we do if they do know it? Okay? That's how we function. With the technology now, someone who's really advanced in math can even get more advanced through some of the technology they can do in their Chromebooks. And similarly, that allows teachers to have maybe some one-on-one time with a different student. But at the end of the day, our teachers need to-- and I'll say this too, one of my favorite teachers at Chantilly, Barbara Clogarty, she didn't give homework. She taught AP Lang. She had the highest scores in our school for AP Lang because she owned her kids for 90 minutes. It's hard to maintain the momentum of instruction for 90 minutes, but great teachers do it. And she owned them for the entire time they were in her classroom. They wrote in her classroom. They read in their classroom. They collaborated in her classroom. And they were prepared for that AP test. So yeah, I've struggled with flipped classrooms. And I prefer our teachers to be teaching in our classrooms versus having kids watch something and then come in and do their homework. Thank you.
Sounds like this is an area where Robin and I agree. I think the idea of a teacher coming to class and not teaching the children is preposterous. And it really doesn't have a place in the school. I must say, I mean, I'm here to present a contrast. And it's, I'm a parent first. I have observed the schools. I've seen a lot of the things that I think are going wrong. This, to me, fits a pattern of new and kind of progressive policies that are doomed to fail. And I had to guess are favorites of the teachers' unions, which of course have an outsized influence on my opponent's party. And I think in terms of presenting the contrast, yes, we both think it's a bad idea. We both think that teachers should be there to teach. We both want teachers to teach and achieve excellence. But in terms of who's going to be in the room and who's going to challenge the board members who are doing things that are favored by the teachers' unions, I think it's important to note that I would view myself as the person who is uniquely qualified to make that challenge of the board and of these ideas, which, as I said, are really doomed to fail. There's plenty of them, not just the flipped classroom. Thank you.
Question six. Many parents shared their concerns about FCPS allowing transgender girls play in girls' sports and use girls' locker rooms. Do you think it is fair to allow transgender girls with more muscles and more oxygen intake to compete with biological girls in sports? Thank you. So this question first will go to Paul.
The answer is absolutely not. It's not only not fair to the female student athletes, it is absolutely dangerous. Probably a lot of people in the room have seen some of the videos that I've seen of biological men playing volleyball against girls. There's a girl that can't speak right due to getting a ball spiked at her. My kids happen to be into swimming. My 14-year-old son is a pretty good swimmer. He would hold the 15 to 18 record at our club for women because of the inherent physical differences between biological males and biological females. And it is, in swimming, it's just unfair. And we've seen that with the UPenn swim team. And the examples are getting to be legion at this point. You see it in powerlifting and biking. But the danger that it presents in some sports is of even more concern, which is something I say as a father of two athletic women, who I want to be able to compete fairly against other women. It's excellent and really a difference in our generation to, for example, my parents. My mom didn't have those type of opportunities. And again, we're squandering it. We're squandering it on purpose. And that's not to mention the camaraderie and the confidence that comes from women competing against one another without the unfairness that we're seeing across sports, not to mention the dangers. So the answer to me is kind of, absolutely not.
So this is an easy one, I think, for me because Virginia High School League doesn't permit that. So it's actually not up for debate because it's not allowed at the moment for trans women to compete on women's teams.
Yes, can you guys hold your questions till, I have plenty of time for the audience to ask the questions. Question number six. Two years ago, a gender-freed male student in Loudon County sexually assaulted a biological girl in girls' bathroom. Another Virginia student, Sage, a transgender boy, was sexually assaulted by a biological male student in boys' bathroom. What measures should FCPS implement to prevent both gender and non-transgender students from being sexually assaulted in school bathrooms and locker rooms? So this time, Robin, you go first.
So I think at the heart of this is a safety question. I don't want to debate what happened in Loudon County. But it's my understanding that in one situation, the young man was not trans. He was a theater kid. He happened to be dressed in costume on that day. He had already had relationships with the young lady. They'd met in that bathroom before. He agreed and consented. At this particular time, she did not consent. And what he did to her was horrific. It was disgusting what he did to her. And he should be consequence to the highest degree of law because he violated her in an ugly way. But I can tell you, in Fairfax County, we've never had a trans issue in a bathroom. We've had issues in bathrooms. We've had girls pulled into bathrooms by boys and violated. We've had girls pulled into custodian closets and violated. We've walked into trailers that were left unlocked, classroom trailers, and found kids engaged in sexual relations. These are issues, right? I mean, and safety is our number one issue. You know, the beginning of the school day is a challenge for all of us. As someone who worked for 30 years, you don't feel safe when every door is open and everyone's coming and going so easily out of every single door. And sometimes that's when people come in from outside who aren't students and can hurt our students. But you know, it's something that absolutely is a priority issue. But I don't believe that it's a trans issue. I think that we have, there's ugly people out there. There's people who prey on other people. We could get into a discussion about sex trafficking, which is horrific. We are one of the most-- I don't even know the terminology, but Fairfax County is like a cesspool of where this is happening. And when I used to give presentations to parents, and I did that a lot as a Director of Student Services, and I would say to parents, if not my kid, then who? Because parents would always be like, well, not my child. Well, if not your kid, then who, right? We want our kids protected. But we give them a cellphone or a computer and let them take it to their room. They can go anywhere they want to in the world without your supervision. I'm against that. I believe that those devices should be charged in your bedroom. I don't believe in giving kids cellphones until they're in ninth grade. Social media is hurting our kids. I could go on and on and on about all the ways in which we worry about the safety of our children. But I don't think that a trans kid in a bathroom, it could be any kid in a bathroom. And so I just, I don't, I feel like that's too targeted. And I don't think it's fair. So that's what I'd say. I think we all care about safety. I think we can all agree on that. And I think it's something we need to work on. I think we need more administrators. And we need bigger security teams in our school systems. And we need to figure out how to manage our bathrooms because kids are bathing in there. They're tearing off soap dispensers. They're doing destructive damage because of TikTok challenges. That was our biggest problem when we came back from COVID, was TikTok challenges and the destruction. So we need to get our kids' behavior under control and teach them respect and understand they're in a school to learn.
I think this is one of those areas where I can't present a stark contrast to my opponent. Biological men have no place in bathrooms and locker rooms with biological women, biological girls, young girls. It is not only, it is a matter of safety in Loudon. Case bore that out. It is a matter of respect for these girls, their dignity, their privacy. And it's outrageous to think that we would allow whichever biological male chooses to go in there based on what he says he identifies as that particular day into their private spaces. It is, the danger is so self-evident and that we can't say it or that certain groups can't say that, can't acknowledge it. It's deeply concerning to me as a father of girls. I really can't say enough about it. Now, to the point that, well, that kid wasn't really trans. And that kid wasn't, he didn't really mean it when he assaulted those girls, when he humiliated those girls, when he made them feel uncomfortable. We have no business judging whether a biological man is or is not truly trans. We run down a very slippery slope. The answer is so crystal clear and common sense. Biological males belong in the biological male bathroom. Same is true for biological females. So that's my stance. And again, I feel uniquely qualified to tell the board exactly that as they pretend that there's no harm in this and we ought to prioritize that child who wants to go in, that biological male that wants to go in the female locker room, female bathroom, over the dignity, the privacy, and the safety and the security of those girls. So that one's--
Question number seven. If elected, what would your top three policy priorities be? Paul?
So my three campaign platforms, the planks of my campaign are really simple. I don't know that it's fair to call them policies, but it would be a prioritization on these three things. And it would be repeated across everything that we do, including these ridiculous hours that the board spends on resolutions and grandstanding and virtue signaling. There should be absolutely none of that. The board should be focused on achieving academic excellence and creating an environment to reverse the learning loss that we've caused, to regain the status that Fairfax County Public Schools has but is slipping away. We're seeing losses or declines in SAT scores, NAIVE scores. We've already talked about Thomas Jefferson. So that's number one. And it could really be number two and three. Number two is we have to get rid of some of these ridiculous policy prescriptions which get in the way of achieving that academic excellence. I do it again and again. We've already talked about it with respect to Thomas Jefferson. The same is true with teaching the children biological science fiction, such as that a doctor just chose their sex at birth. It is confusing to these kids, is harmful to the kids, and it is driven by ideological political policy. The third is we need to prioritize the rights of parents. And the parents need to be partners in helping the kids achieve to their greatest ability. To the extent that you don't consider one of those policies, I would say that the budget absolutely needs to be looked at from top to bottom. And not just as a matter of, well, there's $3.5 billion. How do we get more? We need to look at every single dollar that's spent, including the dollar spent on all of these administrators and some of these ideological pet causes. And we need to zero those out and put the money where it belongs, which is reversing the harm that we've done to these kids through the COVID policies and through the ideologically-driven policies that do not favor academic excellence. Thank you.
So as someone who cares deeply about high expectations and learning, I think I mentioned this in my opening remarks, I would love to see pre-K available for everyone who cannot afford it. You have to be the poorest of the poor. And you're basically in a lottery in Fairfax County to be selected. My daughter is a kindergarten teacher. When kids walk into a kindergarten classroom, some know their letters, some can read, some know their numbers. Some can't recognize a letter. Some have never even sat still. They've never been with peers of their own age. That's so challenging. And that learning gap within that one classroom, even though she had two instructional assistants, is just insurmountable to overcome. We have to, we're one of the richest counties in the world. DC can have pre-K for all. We need to have pre-K. And I'm not saying pre-K has to be your choice. If you have the means to go to private pre-K, so be it. But the people who can't afford it, we need to do that. Because that's going to start closing achievement gaps. If kids are reading by third grade, then that school-to-prison pipeline is dissolved. Because then the behaviors don't happen. Then the acting out doesn't happen. So numeracy and literacy is a priority. We're also in the middle of a teacher shortage. This is a national issue. It's not just Fairfax County Public Schools. We have teachers, especially in special education, we're hiring people on provisional contracts who don't have the training to be in the space. We need people who are student-facing, but we need them to have been trained in schools. So we need to partner with colleges and universities around tuition reimbursement or loan forgiveness if people give back to our school system for five years. I think also in terms of retaining teachers, we might have to look at a bonus, a retention bonus after five years if they're coming back for their sixth year because we're losing people in the first three. I mean, we have to have qualified teachers in front of all of our students. We can't have long-term subs. We can't have provisional teachers. This is not going to help close our achievement gaps. I believe strongly in academic expectations. I believe we need to reevaluate our grading policies. I think when we came out of COVID, we're a little bit forgiving, too forgiving. And I think that we have, it's impacted motivation. I think our students are most challenging learners and our highest, most academic learners are lacking the motivation they had before the COVID pandemic. And we need to change that. And I think some of our grading policies are playing into that. So I want to do that. Also, as someone with a mental health background, I care about the social, emotional well-being of our kids. And I think that's an area we need to address. And I will say again, absolutely, we need to partner with parents. We can't do anything like this without parent support. We beg parents to come into our schools. We beg parents to be part of band boosters and athletic boosters, to come in and help us chaperone field trips. It's, I mean, we want you part of this. Because the more people supporting a child, the greater chance that we're going to get them going on the right track. And they're going to meet their potential. And the other thing I'd say is, you know, my opponent has mentioned TJ repeatedly. I just, I'm not familiar with the ideology that you're referencing. So I would love something more specific because I'm not sure what you're-- it's very generic, but I never hear anything specific about what these-- specific, how this is in our curriculum and where it's happening. So because I want to stick to reading, writing, arithmetic because it's our charge to educate our kids. So thank you.
Question number eight. Some parents shared with us that it was difficult to get hold of their school board members. Their communication of concerns was ignored. If elected, how would you ensure an open and timely communication with your constituents? Robin?
Well, not knowing the volume of what that might look like, I certainly can tell you as somebody who was the Director of Student Services at a school with 3,900 kids, I often heard from lots of different parents. I'm always committed to staying as late as I need to, to return phone calls, return emails. If I don't know answers, I'm not going to pretend to know an answer to a question. I'm going to take the time to find out an answer. I do want to hear from constituents. I think one thing is that, yes, I own a small business, but I have the time to do this work. I have the time to be available to you. I have the time to be available to be in my schools, to see kids' curriculum work, to see a science fair, but also to go to a performance, to go to a pyramid concert, to go to a football game. I am here because I care about kids. I care about the schools in the Dransville district. And I will be available to teachers. I will be available to students. I will be available to you. I do not have something that demands on my time so much that I can't be there as needed. And again, I don't know the volume. If all of a sudden I'm getting 100 emails a day, well, that's going to be a challenge for me. But hopefully, that's not the case. And you will hear back from me. Because I've taken pride my whole career in not leaving people hanging who've reached out to me for something for 30 years. So I would continue in that same way as your school board member. Thank you.
This is one that's very important to me as a parent, as a citizen. It did feel that I and so many others in my shoes were not listened to. For example, when we were voicing concerns about the effects that the COVID shutdowns would have on the kids, those concerns have borne out to be true. Anybody that thought about it would have known that it was going to have those effects. And it has. And we're dealing with it now. So it is something that's critically important to me to listen to parents individually, make sure they're responded to, make sure that I'm understanding-- sure they're responded to, make sure that I'm understanding their particular issues and bringing them up at the board. The current board, which is made up of really one political party, has shown an absolute and appalling disinterest in listening to parents, including me, including a lot of my peers, and I'm running in large part to reverse that. So that's, that's my answer to the question. I do have a response on the TJ policy that's causing the problem. The policy is as simple as a matter of a, of a court case in which there was discovery and showed what everybody knew to be true, that they were purposefully discriminating against certain ethnic minorities who they feel were overrepresented at TJ, specifically Asian Americans. They had a specific goal to limit the Asian Americans in that school. That was at the expense of academic excellence. It was wrong. They're going to be found, it's going to be found to have been illegal at the Supreme Court. Everybody knows it's illegal because it's racial discrimination, plain and simple. So that is my answer to the policy as to what's harming TJ is that we took our eye off the ball and we're not focusing on academic excellence. Thank you.
The newest statistic shows that the chronic absenteeism rate in Langley High School is about 9% and 12% in McLean High School. If elected, what would be your proposed solution to this issue? Paul?
This is a difficult one. It, it does, at least in my opinion, it reflects the result of what we did in shutting down the schools and acclimating kids to the concept that school is optional or, I mean, the schools really said that it was optional, that they didn't, the kids didn't need to be there, they were prevented from being there for, gosh, if memory serves, months, if not years, at least in a normal classroom. And now we're dealing with the, the consequences of it, even at Langley. I think that there are things that we could do. I think that the first recognition is to say, we made a mistake. We made a mistake shutting down the schools for as long as we did. It's had these predictable consequences and we as a board need to do everything that we can to reverse that mistake, including involving the parents, doing what we can to reach out to those kids, to get them into school, to set the right, the right incentives for the kids and for the teachers to get them back in school where they need to be in order to prepare for the rest of their lives. It might, it might be a lost cause with some of the kids, which is, which is heartbreaking. But my short answer is we need to do everything we can and the board needs to do everything it can, having been a large part of the cause of that issue. Thank you.
So for the record, I just want to share that I think one of the biggest mistakes that our board made, or our school system, I don't know who made the call, was when we went virtually, that we didn't require our kids to turn on their, on the cameras. Okay? Summer school, they're required to turn the cameras on. I don't know why we didn't do that. And I think that that allowed kids to, you know, fall asleep, do whatever. So I have an issue with that and I also think we should have come back in person sooner. But that was not my charge, there's nothing I could do about that. I just worked for the system and I had to do as the system directed for me to do. In terms of absenteeism, yeah, I think one of the interesting things that people don't realize is once we were allowed, kids were allowed to remove their masks, a lot of our kids didn't remove their masks. A lot of our kids have really, really, really low self-esteem and they're socially, emotionally battling things. And school avoidance and school phobia is prevalent more than we've ever seen it. I think we've also, in some ways, we've sort of raised, you know, you know, we're very protective of our children and, you know, I think that sadly, out of fear, it's because I, these are the cases I've worked with as a director. This is what I did with counselors, was try to get kids back into school. Whether we were trying to do an alternative schedule, whether we were trying to place classes different times, or we were trying to put their favorite class first period, whatever it was, a lot of this is just social, emotional in terms of not getting there and parents afraid to push their children because of suicidal ideation being weaponized. We have some very depressed kids, but we also have, and, and, so we're in a mental health crisis. I, I want to work with anyone we can work with in social services, social work psychologists, counselors, truant officers, parents. We have to partner with parents. Parents maybe, you know, need to come bring their kids to school. I say this knowing that my brother had an issue with my niece when she went into seventh grade and I was dumb about it. He's like, I'm sitting in the counselor's office and they're looking at me like, I'm the problem. I'm not trying to bring my kid to school. I'm trying to bring my kid to school, but I can't bring my kid in. It's kicking and screaming and crying. But we've got an issue and, and the other thing I'll say is I think we need to evaluate our calendar. I think we have too many four, four-day weeks. I think we lose the momentum of construction while the calendar is in place for two more years. I think we need to look at that. I mean, we need to honor religious holidays, but at the same time, we're a school. And we need to, and it hurts parents who can't afford childcare when we have all these four-day weeks. So I think if we get back to five-day weeks, that will help with momentum of construction. But I think we've got to do everything we can do because a lot of our kids are just, they're hurting and we need to get them back. And also, some of them have never, it never failed. So the second something doesn't go well in class, they don't have to face it. So maybe we need to think about more at the elementary age level. How do we allow failure in a way in which they pull themselves up by their bootstraps and keep going and, and help them understand trial and error and working hard? Thank you.
And I will open the floor for the audience to answer the question, to ask the question. What do you think should be the budget priorities for our school district? And what would you do to help with the programs for gifted students? Paul?
I think the budget priorities should be really simple. Teaching every child the utmost academic achievement that that child can realize. And I submit that the budget does not reflect that, it doesn't even reflect any close to that at the current time. We have a $3.5 billion budget. We have plenty of money to do what we need to do, including reversing some of the, some of the harm that we've done to the kids. And when I look at the budget, when I look at what things, what money is spent on in terms of equity, training of teachers, and speaking of why we can't retain teachers, I mean, those teachers that just want to teach the kids are discouraged by all of this ideology and all of this politics that's injected into the classrooms. So we need to eliminate all of that. We need to get back to basics of focusing on teaching the kids and involve zeroing out that budget first and foremost. When you have $3.5 billion, it's not enough to look and say, okay, well, we spent the $3.5 billion on all these things. What should we change this year? And look at it from, and we look at every dollar of it and say, is this maximizing the kids' academic achievement? And if the answer is no, it should be spent somewhere else until we have every dollar spent that we need to spend to do that. And we're just not doing it right now. So that would be the, the answer to the question. There are some local issues that are very frustrating as taxpayers here in Drainsville, right? The McLean High School is a, I think, I think we both agree on this. The question is, who's going to challenge the board to stop taking so much money out of Drainsville, out of the McLean District, out of the Kent Gardens District, and leave these kids in schools that are, you know, at 120% overcrowding, which is a very predictable result in Kent Gardens. And the McLean High School, the facility is, is really abysmal when compared to the amount of taxes that we pay and really when compared to peer high schools. And we should do better. We should have been doing better for the last 20 years on, for example, both of those schools. And it gets really to a lack of prioritization that we need to change. So that's the, that's the answer. Thank you.
So I'm going to start where my opponent finished with overcrowding. I absolutely agree we have issues. I actually agree that McLean is in disrepair. If on the school board, I would want to hire an independent auditor to look at our capital improvement plan and how they determine the so-called Q, because it doesn't seem to make sense. And it's insiders making the decisions. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that I would want some sort of outside perspective to evaluate all of our facilities. I would also love maybe the PTA president from all of our schools to be part of the task force so they can visit other schools. And that may, may help us better understand disrepair in terms of all the schools in our system. But I agree that McLean, by comparison to the other schools in Drainsville, needs a lot of work. Also in terms of the budget, you know, 90% of the budget goes to salaries. And, you know, I talked about this before. I mean, you know, $47,000 is a starting salary for a teacher who has a credential, who's finished four years, is not a livable wage in Fairfax County Public Schools. So, you know, just keep, just understand. The other thing to understand is J-LARK is an independent organization that did an evaluation of how much money our state, each state, not just ours, but the 50 states, give to the local schools to support their, their, their school systems. Virginia's 40th out of 50. We get just under, most states get, we get, get just under 2,000 more per pupil than we get. So we are burdened as taxpayers. I agree with Paul. We need to, we need to, we need to tear down that budget and look at everything. Okay? But we also need to teach all students, which means we have kids who need to be toileted. We have kids who are autistic. We have kids, we, our special education population is 16%. It's on average, it's 10% in most counties. We are, we are 20, 36% free reduced lunch in Fairfax County Public Schools. We need to make sure our kids are eating. Yes, the federal government should give them that free reduced lunch, but a lot of kids don't fill out that paperwork. We are also 20% English language learners. So we need to think about how unique these populations are. And yes, we need high academic standards for all of our kids. Somebody who went to William Mary, yeah, I want to be challenged. I don't want to be bored in a classroom. I want to have the next course after that. If that means you start algebra in seventh grade, then you get to multivariable calculus as a senior. We have pathways. We have pathways and there are some schools that have higher level courses because of credentialing of teachers. So sometimes that's a problem. We might want to teach a higher level credential course at Langley, but they don't have a credential teacher. So we need to work on that piece of it as well. But I totally agree that we need to believe in high expectations for all our students.
That concludes our side of the questions. Now we're going to open it up to the audience for questions.
Yes, my question is regarding exclusive material. This book is banned, books. Number one on that list is genderqueer, which contains heterosexuality. Number seven is law and order, that's basic pedophilia. Both of those books challenge for inclusion in Fairfax County Public School Libraries. What is your position on those two materials, specifically law and order, genderqueer? Should they be, should they be in school libraries?
I've had the unfortunate experience of seeing some of the content of those books. They're pornography and the answer is no. Pornography doesn't belong in any of our school libraries, particularly our library is accessible to our younger students. But with those two, I don't think they have any place in any school library. That doesn't, that's not to say that they're banned books. People want to buy them, I suppose they can buy them, but they have no business in a school library where we do need to curate the selection and should be targeted towards educational books and not, put simply, pornography.
So as I shared before, I have an undergraduate degree in psychology and I have a master's degree in counselor education. I do not have a degree in kiddie lit or adolescent lit. I am not, I'm in a position to have the expertise around what's appropriate. That's why we have educators who are in that position. But I will also tell you that Regulation 301.3 does allow parents to contest a book. There is a procedure that's in place in Fairfax County to do that and I would encourage any parent who has a concern about a book to, to go ahead and do that. I also want to make sure parents understand that curricularly, when you get a syllabus at the beginning of the year for social science or English or whatever course, if you disagree with the book that's supposed to be part of that reading, you can opt your child out of that book. The other thing I want to advocate for is with technology, there's no reason that when a student checks a book out of the library, that a parent cannot get an immediate notification, parents being informed, of the book that was checked out. So I would be a supporter of that. So parents are aware of what books their kids are checking out of our libraries because we have the technology to do that.
I want to stand here to ask a question so that everybody can hear me well. Okay, so I'm here as a concerned father of two. My, both my kids are in the FCD system. You know, I'm just, I'm here because I'm concerned, right? So I would rather to stay home on a Friday night to have a beer, watching TV, right? But I feel I have to come here and listen to the candidates to, to find out what, what their idea, what they are thinking. So for the sake of time, I have many concerns, but for the sake of time, I'll just ask one question. So my daughter just started in Cooper Middle School this fall, right? So at the beginning of the school, she's, she was given a seventh grade book list and there are 40 books on this list. And me and my wife checked all these books, at least more than 20 of them are about LGBT, about BLM, about, you know, violence and also anti-police, right? So I have, you know, my education, my background, my value does not, does not allow me to understand and appreciate this list. And at the night of back to school, we went to the school, asked the English teacher who provided this list, how this list is, who made this list? Is it the teacher herself? Is it the, the school as a whole or the principal, all FCPs? The teacher only answered to us is that we make the list. And we asked, who are we here? And the teacher refused to answer and walked away, basically. Right? So I guess, you know, no wonder, as we all know, the academic performance of, of FCD system dropped so dramatically in these years because at least, my understanding based on this list, some of the teachers, some of the schools at least, are not putting their focus on academics, but they are putting their focus on influencing students with somebody's value, which I don't agree. So, I mean, the school's focus is not there. So my question to both candidates, do you support such list? Oh, one more thing. So when we asked the teacher, so whether this list of books are mandated for students to read, the teacher said no. Basically, she was, she was saying that the student can read whatever they want. Then why you make this list? And also I want to say, I don't see single classic books in this list. I don't recommend, uh, I'm sorry. Okay. Question is that? Okay, I'm, I'm speaking the background of my question so that everybody can understand where I come from. Okay. So question to the candidates, do you support such list of books recommended to students for their English class? Yes or no, and my wife. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I, as you were reading that list or as you were talking about that, my assumption was that this was, I guess, a list of additional reading, but not required reading. So thank you for clarifying that at the end. Without seeing the list, I can't speak to the specifics of the number of, of titles that are LGBTQ or that are Black Lives Matter.
Yeah. I can't read the picture either one.
Okay. But what I'm going to say is that, you know, you know, obviously literature needs to be age appropriate, but age appropriate diverse books can serve as mirrors and windows of different human emotions and experiences. While you might not choose to read a certain book, then another child might choose to read that certain book. And again, as I've talked about before, you got that list as a parent, so you can have that conversation with your child. I would want a parent to have a discussion with a child and say, you know, if you don't want them to read certain books, then have that conversation and tell them, you're not going to be able to read these books, but you can read this book. But, you know, it could be that a parent has the right to want their child to read a book about the LGBTQ plus community. Maybe they're, they have a relative who's a member of that community. But again, it's a parent's right to be a part of that child. But again, it's a parent's right to be a part of that child's education and to help them choose a book that's appropriate for them.
But the teacher is pushing.
Are you a parent and which parent do all that?
Why can you give them a book by A-list versus B-list?
The teacher is pushing the book.
No, the teacher provided a list.
Yes. Where is the A-list versus B-list?
I, I, I'm not familiar, other than what the gentleman shared. And what I'm saying is, I believe in a parent's right to review the list with their child and help their child choose a book that's appropriate for their child.
Be exposed to the kids.
Can I say one thing? Yeah, yeah. So, we are all working classes. We work in our class in the day, and we have children to pick up. And then, you know, we have to pick up this list, right? Why in the first place the school can not recommend something more appropriate, other than waste a bunch of all time, energy, even money, you know, to correct things up?
So, what I was saying was, I'll just, this is an Asian-American, this is a Chinese-American Parents Association. You know, somebody could object to a book about Chinese-Americans. That's inappropriate. But maybe as a Chinese-American, you'd want that as, as an available text for your child. It's not my place to judge a family's decision-making, but you, you have been given the list, you can review the list with your children, and you can help them pick a book that's appropriate. I think there are titles that lots of different people would agree, would disagree on, based on their upbringing or their background religiously or culturally. So, I'm not, you know, just saying, parents can help students make the right choice. And I don't think it's our place to determine, like I said, you know, culturally, I think that we need to learn about one of those cultures. Those would be important books as well.
We can talk to our children to make our own list. We love this. We don't need this.
So, this is, this is an issue that animates me. It's plain as day, I'm a parent in the school district. I see what my kids are taught as facts. I see the, the agenda, the ideological agenda that's being pushed. Everybody here knows it, everybody here sees it, whether we all can recognize it is a different question. It's clear that the teacher or whoever chose that list, the "we" did not choose it based on academic merit of those books, plain as day. There is an ideological agenda that has infected Fairfax County Public Schools and many others. We need to do everything we can to root it out. There ought to be structures in place that when a teacher assigns a list that's clearly politically motivated, that we talk to the teacher and say, that's inappropriate. And it's statistically impossible that over half the books that are recommended are all bent towards a far-left political ideology. It just, it's, everybody knows that it's not geared toward academic merit and books that these kids can and should be reading. So, no, I don't think it's enough to pay our taxes, fund a $3.5 billion budget for teachers then to be implementing an ideological agenda, and then we as parents to have to police that agenda and talk to our kids, as I have, and say, hey, here's the story. There's political sides, there's political issues, and the school district is clearly on one side. They all see it, their friends see it, they all know it. And that's the discussion that we're forced to have, instead of, hey, Animal Farm is a really great book, and everybody should read it to understand how authoritarianism can happen, and so on and so forth with the classics. And it's a shame where we've gotten to. So, no, I don't think that's appropriate at all. And I don't think it's enough that the parents then have to self-police and talk to the kids and, and really confide in the kids that, hey, this school has a, a political agenda. It'd be far better to get rid of that political agenda and teach the basics straightforwardly and, and get these kids ready for later life.
So, I have two questions. You mentioned that you were against school, the schools being closed for so long, but you said you were in the system, and so you had to go along with it. Did you speak out publicly? And, and if you did not, how, how would we trust that you would be able to speak out against these ideological agendas and non-academic agendas? And if you spoke out, exactly what did you do? So, that's one question. And then, my second question relates to a question that was asked previously that you didn't really answer, which is, there was a time, I mean, I'm, I'm rephrasing this question, there was a time when voyeurism and indecent exposure were crimes. But today, we have the school system that says that a man can walk into a woman's locker room, a girl's locker room, and view the girls changing and be undressed himself. These used to be crimes. Today, we have a school board that actually supports it and is against the girls. Could you comment, please? And what is your position on that? I would like to hear your position very clearly and no, no excuses about, you know, you don't have a degree in psych. You do have a degree in psychology. I would like to see your answer.
So, first of all, yes, when I feel something or think something, I voice my opinion. When I retired from Fairfax County Public Schools, the other directors who had my same position said, who's going to ask the tough questions? Who's going to stand up to the people when we disagree? So, I can assure you that I will do that. So, getting back to, you know, I'll be honest with you, the trans situation, it's a challenging situation.
No, it's not.
Why?
So, let me share my experience. All I can give you is my experience, okay? Most of our trans students take online PE. They don't take PE during the day. They take it online in the evening or they take it in the summer. A lot of our trans students, if they do take regular PE, choose to change in a different location. I'm honestly not that aware of any of our kids changing. And I, I know I hear that. I know when I turn on Fox or Newsmax, it sounds like every child, half the school is trans. But, but it, like I said before, with trans kids, their parents reached out to us first. And one of the reasons they reached out to us is because they wanted to make sure their students were safe, and they wanted to establish bathrooms. The majority of our trans kids use faculty bathrooms.
You're not answering the question. I asked you whether you support it, boys being allowed to go to those rooms.
Be honest. What do you believe? I'm a reader.
Well, here's the thing. I support the superintendent's decision, and I can tell you this. The decision is that trans kids, I do have my opinion, okay?
What she said, she said all white.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're going to, we're going to, obviously, this room, I will, you know, this room is, is very right-leaning, but I'm going to tell you.
What?
Okay. All right. So, here, I'll answer your question.
We're parents.
Right. Right, okay. Yes, I support, when there is a situation where a student is trans and they're taking PE, I do support them having access to locker room. I do think that within that, that we have to, we have spaces in our locker rooms, because we have, within locker rooms, separate rooms. So, I think we need to address that. I am, I will, I do think that it's a concern of, of kids dressing in the same space, but I do think that kids should be able to go into a locker room and have a space where they can dress.
So, we've talked about the teacher shortage and the problem with salaries, but Fairfax County schools are paying the chief equity officer $232,000 a year, and that's just one of many administrators who are in the $200,000 range. Do we really think adding more administrators is going to solve the problem?
And that's a concern of mine as well, and I think the answer is no. The need is not for more administrators. This really started on college campuses, where we got away from hiring professors and got into hiring deans and assistant deans, and deans of varying types, most of which related to advancing, once again, ideological, political causes. And it's now, a lot of those students that went to those colleges have graduated, now they're working in Fairfax County Public Schools and many others. And it is a gross misuse of our tax dollars and of our county resources, which should be directed to the kids. The notion that we don't have enough to pay the teachers in Fairfax County, to me, is just one that, I disagree. I think we can find the numbers, not only with those high-paid administrators, but a lot of low-level bureaucrats who are also paid to push paper in the, in the pursuit of ideological agendas. So, my answer is yes, we ought to be focusing the dollars on those that are teaching the kids and those that are helping the kids that need help and challenging the kids that need, that need more challenging. It's, uh, it's one of the things that really animates me and it's, it's driven me to be here tonight.
When I hear a number like that, it's pretty humiliating, pretty humbling, to think that someone with a master's degree plus 30 capped out at a number nowhere near that number. So, you know, I think that's a high number. I don't, you know, I, I do believe in equity, and equity is, it's become a bad word, but I believe in equitable opportunity. I can tell you, when I started working in Fairfax County Public Schools, you had to get a teacher recommendation to take an honor from AP course, or you had to, in theory, like, get a certain grade at the previous grade course. We have open enrollment now. I think that's a beautiful thing. I think we should have. We all want high expectations for all of our students. If we have barriers to access, that's not opening pathways for our kids to achieve at a high level. And we've eliminated some of those barriers. So, when I think about equity, I think about equitable opportunity. I don't know exactly what her role is. I don't know exactly everything that she does. But I, but I can assure you that, you know, like I said, as, as someone who worked on the school level, we don't see numbers like that. So, so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money. I, I do think that, you know, what troubles me is, you know, my life's work has been committed to helping kids and to being in a school. And I told you early on, it's, it's about unconditional positive regard. I can't judge a kid for their situation. I can't judge a kid for what they're going through. It's my charge to try to be there for that student and help that student, and, and to reach out and work with their parents to help that student. And that's what I've endeavored to do my entire career. And, yeah, we have some culture wars that are going on, and it is evident in this room. And, you know, I'm sorry, I, you know, there's some, they're, they're just, they're tough to tackle, but it's so few students, but that's what I want you to understand. Every child matters, but the majority, this is, majority of our kids are, they're, they're great kids, and they're, they're not dealing with, you know, gender identity issues, you know, they're not. So, and I can, I can tell you this, I'll say this, I thought about this, and, and maybe you can think about it a second. I think the hardest thing in the world to ever do would be to be someone who is dealing with gender identity issues personally. I just, when I, when I've talked with some families and talked with some students, you know, the depth of pain for those young people. And again, the locker room thing is a tough thing, and I, and I, I want them in separate spaces within the locker room, but I don't want to ostracize a child. I don't want to ostracize a child, ever. Doesn't matter what their background, their ethnicity, their culture, their religion. I don't want to ostracize a child. I want them all to feel safe when they come to school. So, we have some tough decisions to make, and we have, we have tough work to do. And, again, I'm running because I want to get refocused on teaching and learning and high academic achievement. We spend too many, as Paul said, I watch the school board meetings and, and hearing, they have to speak to every proclamation. They're all, they're repeating themselves, and they're not getting to issues early enough. Stop, you know? What I've been told by them is, well, if I don't respond, my constituency doesn't know if I agree or disagree. Well, figure it out when you all agree on something, let one person speak and move on. Let's get to the stuff that people want to stay awake for and be a part of in terms of real conversations that affect student achievement.
We're going to take the final question, and then we will have, yeah, and then we will have the candidates each to have a closing mark.
Okay, fine. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Ellis. Quick question. I, I think this lady touched on this while you were on your way here. So, we could be doing a few, but I wanted to ask you both, please. Being a school board member takes a lot of time. It's a commitment, it involves school board meetings, committee meetings, meeting with staff, visiting schools, being accessible to parents, as we talked about. How do you plan on serving the position while balancing your work and commitments?
It's a very fair question in light of what happened with me tonight, which is rare. It, it gets, though, to what drives me to be here. Education is so important to me. It's kind of baked into my, my background. It's so important that my kids and really all kids have the opportunity to be educated. So, the short answer is, I'm going to make the time that I need to, and it's what I did, and I had the same career. Perhaps I had a little less autonomy at that time, because I was part of a bigger partnership at that time. When the COVID shutdowns hit, after the first few months, which were, were somewhat fun and the kids were outside playing, I realized, these kids aren't going to learn anything for the next year and a half if I don't step in and take time away from my, from my career to educate the kids. And that's what I did, and if I'm elected, that's what I will do again for all the kids in Fairfax County Public Schools, because it is that important to me. Just, by way of background, I did homeschool, we, we all, I shouldn't say I homeschooled. We homeschooled our three kids in the year, I guess that would have been fall 2020 into spring of 2021, at great expense to, to my career, to my, you know, compensation and the like. But it's just that important to me. So, I'm going to make the time that I can. I will maintain a career. There will be times like tonight that it conflicts, and, and I'll do everything I can, because it is, it's just that important to me, and that's my answer.
I'll just reiterate, education, public education's been my life's work. It's my passion. It's what I care about. I miss being in schools. I miss being at productions. I miss being at sporting events and seeing kids succeed in the classroom. So, I'm absolutely available. My job as self-employed with my small business, I can determine my times and my hours. So, I will be available.
Thank you for all the active participation from the audience, but due to time, we want to come into the closing marks from our candidates. Each will have one to two, two minutes maximum, and we'll go with Paul.
Thank, I thank everybody, and especially Cap and Nova for having, having us. I think it's, it's been a really rich debate, and hopefully, we presented a nice contrast. I want to close with a little bit of my background in education. I read somewhere, one of the criticisms from the party that endorsed my opponent was, oh, well, Paul Barkowski has no experience within Fairfax County Public Schools, which, which I take as a point of pride, coming as an outsider to really fix some of the problems that we all know about. In terms of my passion for this, I think that my background speaks for itself, and hopefully, the legal background would help. But in terms of my passion for it, just a brief anecdote. So, I know we're here on behalf of the Chinese-American Parents Association. About 100 years ago, the Polish-Americans were in roughly the same boat. My grandfather came here as a baby, based on a family recommendation, that there were a lot of good coal mining jobs in Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. And he and his 22 brothers and sisters, they had that many kids, so that they could have more children working in the mines. Many of the daughters became nuns. All of the males were coal miners. Education was important enough to our family that he saved enough to send my dad to Scranton Prep High School, knowing that the education that he would get would get him out of the coal mines and, and bring him to a place of academic achievement. And that is, that is the passion that I bring to this. My dad ended up getting a PhD in physics from Harvard. He then went on to work at Sandia Labs, where then he realized the defense department was cut, and he went on then to get a medical degree. All of it started with education, and all of it started from hard work and a recognition of how important it is. And that is, that blood course is through my veins, and I'm going to bring that passion and that understanding of how important education is to this position. So, I want everybody to know that, and thank you again for being here. I'm glad.
I also want to thank the Chinese-American Parents Association for having me tonight, for being here. I'm going to do something similar with what Paul did. My mom is my why. My mom was raised, her, her mom worked on the cigarette factory in Fillmore. She started working there when she was 16. She hadn't finished high school. She was married to a gentleman who refinished old furniture, but he was a drunk and he was illiterate. My mom is the smartest person in my family, but she was put in the proverbial typing pool. She was tracked. I don't believe in tracking. My mom should have gone to college, but no, no one ever introduced it to my mother. So, we would talk about equity and we talk about equitable opportunity. I believe that every child that walks in our building, I believe in the transfer of the power of that. the power of that education, K-12, and the transfer of the power of a college education. And while we might disagree on a few issues, I know we all want what's best for our children, and I know we all want them to have access to the best education possible. And I don't want to ever have a kid not believe that college is an option for them. We need to work on career pathways, green careers, apprenticeships, there's all kinds of pathways for our kids. But as someone who's done extensive work in college admissions, the amount of money more you make exponentially over a lifetime is worth it for us to convince all of our kids that college is an option for them. That's my why. Again, I'm here to serve, I want to be part of making our school system better and better. We have some issues we need to address. I really thank you for being here tonight, and I ask for your vote on November seven. Thank you.
A big thank you to our candidates tonight for running the school board. I know it's a position that you don't get paid, so it definitely takes a big heart, courage, and even the sense of humor to run for school board. So hundreds of thousands of years ago, it was called tribes. Then it was called villages. Now it is called communities. The beauty of a village is not in its architecture, but in the souls of its people in a close-knit community. Capanova is a close-knit community, a village, and a tribe. So I want to thank all the helpers for your contribution for tonight. I also want to thank all of you, audience, for being here tonight out of your busy schedule. And I'm sorry for the person who lost the roll of hundred-dollar bills before the meeting. It was all rolled up to the, what, $3.5 billion of FCPs annual budget, and got spent already. So with that, I want to conclude our debate tonight. You are welcome to ask questions, ask more questions to keep them from sleep tonight. Thank you.